Good morning. The September 27, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Superintendent.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cummings, members of the board. Great to see you this morning. I want to introduce Lauren DeBic, who is going to introduce some very special people with us, but I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. DeBic for helping us to realize a dream that I had when I first came to Marion County, to create an opportunity for our community leaders, our business leaders, to come into our school system and to learn more about the work that we do in service to our community and to our students. And I've had an opportunity to meet with them a couple of times and really excited about what we've learned from them and feedback they've given to us, and I think we've created some new partnerships. So I'm just incredibly grateful to Ms. DeBic and the team and to all of the leaders from our community that are here today and participated with us. And just, again, it's an exciting day for me and for our district, so I just wanted to say thank you. So I want to introduce Ms. DeBic to come forward.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings. Good morning, Vice Chair Campbell, board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez. It is my privilege to introduce to you today Class 1 of Leadership MCPS. We will be graduating our inaugural class, and for the last eight months, this group has had the opportunity to see different facets of the district, from transportation to food and nutrition to school choice. They are very engaged. The partnerships that have been made from this program are just so encouraging, and I'm looking forward to what will happen with Class 2. So to get us started with the graduation, I would like to introduce one of the class members, Ashley Gerds.
Good morning. I've been asked to start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance today, so if everyone would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. We are part of the inaugural class, and it has been our profound privilege to be invited to participate in this class. For the past eight months, we have been brought to many different schools, locations, transportation, the Public Ed Foundation, and what we have learned in our class is transparency. Transparency from not only you as leaders of Marion County Public Schools, but transparency of all of the struggles that our teachers, counselors, and students face, and how we can help fix them as a community. We've also learned that discussion is a huge topic in our community, not only on social media, but in person and face-to-face. I have truly learned as a parent of two children here in Marion County that we can be transparent with one another and we can be transparent with the school system. It's all about the ask, and we have learned as a group, with all of us who have children and some of us who don't have children, that we can come to you and we have learned the process and procedures, and you have heard our feedback, and you have already started to make changes, which has made a huge difference in the world to us as parents. Some of us here have run for school board. Some of us are business leaders within the community that want to help give back to Marion County Public Schools, to our students and to our teachers. It has been a huge, huge advantage to us to be able to see the inner workings of the Transportation Department and how truly hard it is to get all of our students around the county. So I want to advise all of the parents listening out there to encourage them to take this class. If you want more answers, you want to be a part of this solution, if you want to be a part of making choices with Marion County Public Schools, take this class. It has opened my eyes. I have been very, very involved with Marion County Public Schools for many years with my children, and I learned so many new things that are so valuable to me as not only a community leader, but as a parent. And on behalf of our class, we want to thank each and every one of you again for allowing this program to be possible, because without it, there would be so much lost information and the discussion would not be open as it is. And thank you for your transparency, and I'm willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and with that, we will begin the graduation. So I will call your name. Please step forward and grab a certificate, and Dr. Gullett will take a picture with you, and if you don't mind standing.
Listen, we're going to expedite this. We're going to come on down and join Superintendent so that we can get the picture all at one time.
Wonderful. Okay. Marissa Brown. Elizabeth Diola. Corinne Guyquod. Ashley Gerds. Kristen Gutierrez. Lindsay King. Anita Kinsler. Mandy Moore. Jennifer Nadu. Cherie Potter. Karen Reed. Dr. Raphael Robinson. Thomas Rumi. April Russell. Jessica Smith. Vanessa Stanfield. Stephen Swett. William Taylor. Renee Williams. And Austin Yates. Okay, and if we could all gather for a group photo, that would be wonderful.
Wait, 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 wait. Y'all got y'all paper, y'all gone. That's what those seniors do when they graduate. Listen, listen, on behalf of the board and the superintendent, I thank the superintendent for this initiative. It helps the community to understand really what the school system does and the inner workings of that, and I pray that more people will take the opportunity to get to know the inner workings of the school district. We're a huge organization, and sometimes people see it and think it's something that you just do overnight, but you guys got to see it firsthand. So again, thank you, congratulations. Thank you, Superintendent, for this initiative, and we're going to give y'all another big hand for making it through that.
Yay, Class 1!
Now, y'all, this is...
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day, stay safe.
Please be safe, guys.
Now they have to go to work.
Chair, Chair Fumay. One of the things that we talked about, we did roundtable last week in our final class, is they're going to be helping to guide the future classes and give...
Good.
...form an advisory group, which I think will be fantastic.
Good.
Thank you for that as well.
Some great people in that group. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wesley Wilcox, Marion County Supervisor of Elections, will recognize North Marion High School as the high school voter registration challenge winners this year. I think that's, again, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much, Board members, as well as Superintendent Gullett, for having us here today, as well as allowing us to continue this award-winning program. This is actually our fifth year conducting the annual voter registration challenge. We conducted it in the spring of 2022, so thank you very much for giving us that access and that opportunity. All seven of our public high schools participated in our challenge, and we had over 1,000 seniors educated on the elections process, well as voter registration process, and all pieces and parts and facets of that experience. We had over five, or we, not over, we had exactly 582 eligible seniors registered to vote this spring, so thank you very much for adding that 582 to our 270,000 registered voters here in Marion County. And I'm extremely proud to announce that this is the first time in our five-year history of doing this that we actually are able to, have our first repeat winner of the voter registration challenge. So before I announce the name of the high school, they had an 87.95% participation rate. As an election process, how do you think 87.95% voter turnout would look? If we could get the adults in our process to participate at that kind of rate, think of the institution that we would have. So 87.95% participation, which equated to 73 eligible seniors who were registered to vote. So, without further ado, I would like to award this to North Marion High School. I would like to do special recognition to Michael Hill, who is the U.S. government teacher, and the principal, Ms. Sales, the principal of North Marion High School. So, congratulations, Mr. Hill.
Yes. All right, appreciate it. Thank you very much. No, I just, I appreciate the support from the North Marion High School community and the leadership at North Marion High School. I've been in this system 30 years, and I'm going to tell you something, there are special things going on up there on the north side, and I can say something about that. I've taught at Forest, I've taught at Westport, coached at Vanguard, I've been around the block, but I'm going to tell you what, North Marion is special, and these kids are awesome. This is for the senior class last year, they did great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. We look forward to our sixth annual that will be coming up very shortly. So once again, board, Superintendent Gullett, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, for, every year, for pushing this initiative. As you were giving those numbers, I was thinking the same thing. Imagine if we had that type of voter turnout in Marion County every election.
Any election, I would be good. Our record in the last 30 years is about 78, 10% less than what these high school kids did.
Exactly.
So it's a wonderful, hopefully, we're teaching that at a young age, and we can instill our civic responsibility to participate in this wonderful institution that we all have. So once again, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
Yes. Wesley, before you get away, so, I'd like, I'd like, this is so critical to America, voting, and since we've got you here, I'd like you to maybe elaborate for the board and the community on what your expectations were going into this, and what you think, you know, what your expectations are going into the next one. What improvements might be there, what you've learned, what the students have learned, or what we might be able to do to enhance this further.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. You know, one of the, probably the biggest myth and/or process that we help with is what to expect, you know, because you sit back here, think about this, you know, as I recognize, none of us are in our teens, early twenties, so if you're getting what I'm saying, we're a bit on the age scale. We've been, we've been to a polling place, we've been to an early voting site, we know what to expect, but think about this from a, from a person that's 18 years of age, and all of a sudden, you know, you hear all about the election process, and you see a lot of media reports, the news reports, of long lines and, and some sort of activity out at polling places. So being able to come in and educate our students on what to expect when you get to a polling place, how you walk in, because one of the biggest fears that we all have is that fear of the unknown. And so if we can come in and educate you about, here's what's going to happen when you go to a polling place, we're going to ask for a photo and signature ID, once we find your voter registration record, we're going to give you the ballot, we're going to instruct you on how to go to the voting booth and mark said ballot, what to do afterwards, and how to go through that process. That probably is the largest impetus or the impediment that we have to this process about, you know, what do I expect? Because you see it on TV, you see some of these things, and sometimes it's a raucous event, and, you know, there's, there's people holding up signs and doing all this, this crazy stuff out in front of all of this. Being able to dispel those fears, educate them on what to expect, how this is going to walk through, educate them on some of the issues and items, not necessarily the candidates or the amendments, but just how the ballot is presented to them as they walk in, I think is a wonderful service. And until this process was started by Ms. Art in my office, we did not have that in Marion County. We went into the high schools, that's a statutory requirement, we always did that, we did presentations at the lunchtime and this, and they just weren't well attended. Being able to tie in to this competitive nature that we as Americans have, we always want to be the best at everything, and being able to tie into that competitive nature and use it for a civic-minded institution has just been a godsend. So I'm very proud of the work that my team has done, the work that your team has done, allowing us to come in and, and do this, that, you know, hey, this is, this is one of the greatest things we've done in a long time. So once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Is it where you want it to be? Is there anything else that we need to do?
There is always things to improve, and we will continue. We do a, like, you know, for lack of a better term, a hot wash, what worked well in this process, what, you know, because as we move through the years, the thing that, that inspires us, you know, the thing that we, that inspired us five years ago may not be that same impetus that we have today, five years later. So we're constantly improving this process to look for new inspirations, new, you know, hooks for, to use a business term, to pull and to get the interest in. Those are constantly changing as we move through, not only with, with that, with the technology world, with just our society in general. So it's always a moving target, we always have room to improve, and with Ms. Art in charge of this, I know we will continue to improve.
Mr. Wilcox, I appreciate the comments from Mr. Browning. I just wanted to mention, perhaps, Ms. Art, if you would like to send the school board members the dates where you'll be at certain schools. I had the opportunity, I was in one of our high schools when one of these was, I was just walking through the media center and was able to kind of say, you know what, as a school board member, we're responsible for picking the chairs you're sitting in. Where was, I mean, like, the money that comes through, all, and actually having light bulbs go off about how budget ties to what they're doing every day and the responsibilities that we have, policies and all, and it kind of was light bulbs, like, wait a minute, like, school board members on the ballot, I can vote for people who are going to make those decisions? And so that would be a way that I say we, as board, could participate in the future. So if you want to send those out to us all, I'm certain if we are available, we would be happy to participate.
We would love to have that interaction, because you coming into this process, either district-wise or however you divide that up, would further enhance this, this project. And so having your participation, we are all in.
We're at your disposal.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you to Ms. Sales and North Marion. Thank you for a great civics teacher, government teacher, because that, that generates the interest in these kids and making sure that they get involved, as they're getting ready to leave high school, they get involved in the process of being a citizen and making sure that they, they fulfill all their rights as citizens. So thank you, guys, so much. Great job in North Marion, great job, great job.
Mr. Wilcox, District 5 is where the best reside.
Got to have northside pride.
Northside, northside pride. That was good, Ms. King, very good. Superintendent.
Good morning again, thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for September 27, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-25.1, D-25.2, D-25.3, D-25.4, D-25.5, D-25.6, and D-25.7 that have been placed under discussion, and items C-9.1, C-10.2, C-13.1, C-15.1, and C-24.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion.
Thank you, Superintendent. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion.
Motion by, motion by Board Member Thora, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Hoes have the same, have the same pleasure. Pass you unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 26, 2022 school board meeting?
Motion.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. There's, there's an issue associated that, I brought it up last school board meeting, and it's, it's minor in that it's the list of comments. When, on the, on the second, for example, the, all four, or four school board members are listed, but one's not, and the minutes, the comments are not listed, and the, this is the same thing last school board meeting. So while, and I've gone over this with the, with the school board attorney, but the idea, we, we have, in modern times, we have the audio and the, and the video and audio record, and as the superintendent just indicated, the video, or the audio record, which is public record, that really is the key. But the actual minutes, it's important that they actually represent, especially in the comments section, that they actually represent. Otherwise, it appears that the individual is not there. It appears, now, you're, you're listed at the top of the meeting, of course, as being there, but if it's scrubbed off at the bottom, if the, if the, if the, it's, it's a listing, it's not truly the minutes, but it's a listing. So I just like some, some attention to that, as the superintendent to...
Is there a particular, you saying that the...
His comments are left off.
That your comments are left off?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it, and it's been, I'm involved in some situations in Tallahassee, we've just been looking, and they get dropped off, and it's not a, you know, it isn't prudent, it, we can get to the actual record, because truly, the actual record is the visual and the audio in modern times, rather than the listing. The listing is kind of a scramble to keep up, I think. It's, it's a listing.
Vice Chair Campbell.
So Chair, as someone who's taken minutes for multiple different civic organizations before, I'm certain it was just an oversight and someone trying to get this done. What I would suggest is we, as a board, approve minutes as amended, perhaps, in that maybe we need to look at these one more time, and we can just get those comments added back in at the bottom. It does list each of the board members by name and lists specific targeted areas that we've talked about. I'm certain it was just an oversight, so if we can perhaps just table this one and, and get that corrected and approve it the next time.
That, that works. We've got several of them, if we could go back through, you know, it's just, it's, it's important...
You can't go back through when, when they've approved them.
Right, if we've already approved it.
However, if there are corrections at that time, we can try to make sure that they're like accurately.
And just for public information, in times past, whenever I've noticed that things that I've said before might have been incorrectly listed or not listed, I've reached out to Board Services, had that actually corrected ahead of the meeting. So the minutes that we would be approving would already be reflected as accurate. So in the future, if there is something like that, it, it may not necessarily warrant public conversation about it, we could actually approve minutes that were already corrected. Nevertheless, in this point, if we can just go ahead and table this one, I think...
Yeah, I think, I think the, the key to that for me is, is there's something going on technically. So if, if in fact, we can address it by addressing it, and we've done that, and we had the discussion, which is excellent, then it helps to address the previous, which are hard to go back, as the chair just indicated, very hard to go backwards. However, going forward, if we can just, I don't know, figure it out, and that way, it'll be, it'll be handled in the future.
So, Ms. Thora, I'm sorry.
Board Chair, my recommendation would be if Ms. Campbell's always kind enough, at the end of each meeting, listing her comments. So if everybody would like to do that, that way I get it verbatim, what it is that you said, I'd be more than happy to pull it bullet and put your comments in that way. That way, there's no misunderstanding, and your comments are exactly the way that you say. A lot of times when you're speaking and we go over the same thing over and over and over again, it's very hard for me to decipher what it is that you're meaning or that you're wanting me to put in. Keep in mind, the things that I put in the comments are strictly having to do with MCPS, school, students, and teachers. So if you're speaking of something else, those items do not get put in there, because it is strictly based on MCPS. So moving forward, if you would like your comments clearly on those, on the board minutes, submit me a sheet at the end, list your comments verbatim, and I'll be more than happy to put them in there, and that will avoid any discrepancy moving forward.
Thank you. So what I'm going to suggest for this, and we got, I think we got two, I'm just going to ask that, I think, Ms. Thora, you made the motion, can you just withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Who seconded it? I think, Ms...
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll, I'm asking, can we withdraw the motion, and we'll just bring it back in the next school board meeting for proof. it back in the next school board meeting for approval.
Just fail the motion.
Okay. But, okay. All right. All right. So, motion is going to be take, uh, failed, and then we'll take it at the next, take it up at the next school board.
Uh, Chair, if, uh, while we're in the discussion, I, I would, um, uh, because it's minutes, and because we think of it in terms of minutes, and minutes are taken, uh, uh, and, and Robert's Rules, uh, indicates minutes, uh, this really truly is a list. I would recommend that we bring this to a workshop and actually work it, work out the procedure for it. If, you know, oh, I, I'm making a suggestion. I, I see that, uh, I, I'm just saying that I think it would be helpful, because the record is incredibly important, and when, when the, when the community looks at what took place, if in fact, uh, as Board Services just indicated, if in fact it is only part of what took place in the, in the business meeting, uh, then I think we should hammer that down so that we can say exactly what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Attorney Powers?
Um, the audio and video portions of the meeting are provided as a supplement for the minutes. Um, what is to be in the minutes is already outlined by Florida Statute 1001 dot 42, uh, B, which says, "Minutes contents." The minutes shall show the vote of each member present on all matters on which the school district board takes action. It shall be the duty of each member to see to it that both the matter and his or her vote thereon are properly recorded in the minutes. Unless otherwise shown by the minutes, it shall be presumed that the vote of each member present supported any action taken by the district school board in either the exercise of, violation of, or neglect of the powers and duties imposed upon the district school board by law or rule, whether such actions are recorded in the minutes or is otherwise established. It shall also be presumed that the policies, appointments, programs, and expenditures not recorded in the minutes, but made and actually in effect in the school district system, were made and put into effect in the direction of the district school board, unless it can be shown they were done without the actual or constructive knowledge of the members of the district school board. So, the minutes contents are specific and limited. It simply requires that there be, um, recording of the vote under 101, 1001 dot 42. Uh, everything else beyond that is essentially supplemental and is augmented by the video recording, which is public record. Um, all open meeting, all open meetings are recorded and, um, are available through the district website.
Thank you, Mr., um, Attorney Powers, because I was going to state that as well. The minutes are only to record our votes and our specifics. A lot of things that are said up here should not be taken word for word, because that's commentary, that's opinions. Those things are not have to, do, do not have, according to Robert's Rules of War and state statute, do not have to be recorded in the minutes, because of the fact that we have audio recording and a video recording. So, all that stuff that, Mr. Brown, that you're kind of referring to, that supplemental stuff, as long as we have your vote and your, uh, your dissension or approval of a vote, that's what's going to be in the minutes. But we'll go back and make sure that you are added to these, if you were taken out.
Yes, and, and Chair, the, uh, I appreciate that, that consistency of one standard is the key, uh, for me. I, I, I would have no problem, uh, if, if in a workshop we decided that there was no need for comments to be, uh, uh, to be a part of the minutes.
The law says the comments doesn't have to be in there. The law says, the law, the statute states that the comments...
But, but I mean, if we decided that. So, but what, what, what I'm concerned about is, is a, a checklist or something that makes sure that if, if, if comments are made, they're in there, or all are missing, or all are included. That's, that's all I'm looking for.
Hello, hello, hello. Ms. Thora?
Thank you. With Robert's Rules in mind, I move the previous question.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, this has been withdrawn, and, um, we will bring this back at the next meeting?
So, let's go ahead and vote.
Vote, vote it down.
Okay. So, all in favor of passing these minutes, signify by aye?
Aye.
Or no. Sorry.
No.
All, 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 all in approval of approving this min, these minutes, signify by aye. All appro, all, same, we have the same signs of denying this, these, um, minutes as well. Aye.
Aye for deny.
Aye for denial.
Yeah, no.
Good enough.
Pass unanimously that this, this motion fails, okay?
Board Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could please get what specifics we're talking about on July 26th that would have...
Can we get that after, off, off air?
Yes, definitely. But I'd need something via email, so that way I could be accurate as to what is missing.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, can you submit to the superintendent, in particular, what you're asking, what you're stating is missing, and that way she can get it?
Yes, uh, it's, uh...
No, 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 not now, not now, not now, not now. After the meeting, could you make that specifically to the superintendent's office, and we'll make sure it gets added to the minutes. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, I'd, I'd be, I'd be glad to if there's any, if there's any, uh, lack of understanding. We, we just, uh, we just, uh, if comments are either listed or they're not listed, and if they're inclusive, it's all five.
Thank you. And we're going to do the same, we're just going to, um, the same thing for 4.2, which is on the agenda, which was approval of minutes as well.
That's correct.
I don't believe there were any comments.
I think that one is this, that was just approving a...
Public hearing, I don't believe...
That was just a public, okay, that was the, um, okay. So, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 2nd, 2022 special school board meeting, public hearing, intended budget?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thora, seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Okay. Pass this 4-1. I'm ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today.
Thank you, Board Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statute, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at today's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This, today's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may cons, may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child, unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school board. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez? Very good. May I have a motion to adopt Neola Policy 8405, Superintendent?
The adoption of Neola Policy 8405 will ensure that the school board's policies reflect the board guidance and are in statutory compliance.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address Neola Policy 8405? Anyone present? Board, any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Mr. Browning?
Yes. Um, the, uh, the overall program has been, uh, incredibly successful for setting policy and reviewing policy and, and, uh, protecting, uh, Marion County School District from issues of perhaps neglect, uh, where law changes, but we weren't catching it. And, uh, kudos to the superintendent and, uh, to the lawyer, uh, Powers for bringing this forward and working, I think, a couple of years, uh, on this. I, I can be corrected at least a year, but probably two. Uh, the, and, and I'm, so I'm, I'm extremely happy with the, with the work being done. The work, though, has to go further. What I've, what I've observed and what is critical to a policy implementation is the enforcement. And I believe that this, this enormous set, and perhaps it has to be that big, this enormous, uh, policy, uh, uh, manual, uh, uh, policy entity, uh, it must be, it must be enforced, it must be implemented in a single manner, with a single standard. What I've noticed is when it is implemented, it can be all over the place. Uh, I would like to see, and I've asked in the past, that we have an actual workshop. One of the workshops is strictly for the implementation and the enforcement of this. Uh, there is such a, an, an important responsibility we have. When we're impacting a child's life, for example, let's take a senior or junior in high school, uh, and, and, and a principal, uh, and that interaction, maybe there's a fight, maybe there's a, uh, some sort of a, uh, an item, we have 44,000 referrals written up. It's how it's implemented, and if there is discretion, there should be enormous discretion all the way through, but often there's discretion if it appears necessary or appropriate, and no discretion if not. And so, what I would like to see is a, is a, I'm not happy with this, until we get it down hard, uh, and understandable to the students who are under it, to the employees, five, six, seven thousand employees. Everyone's life, uh, is, at least their student life and, and the future actualization is impacted by what happens in school. And these refer, these referrals can start a, a, a project in motion. It's been brought up that sometimes you start in the third grade and you go on to, from there, you just begin to accumulate these things and you go on to prison. So, I, I mean, it's just, that, that gives you an idea of the serious nature of, of policy and how it's implemented. So, for this board member, I am not happy with the, uh, with the approval of this without it going back and having at least one more, uh, one solid effort, uh, at implementation. Uh, I think it would, it would be complete at that point, and if it can't be done, if it, if it does pass it, pass, uh, I would encourage future boards to look at that, uh, with a magnifying glass and absolutely, uh, heavy due diligence, because it's a very real issue. Thank you, Chair.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal years 2022, 2023 through 2026, 2027?
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Chair. The approval of the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal years 2022 through 2026, 2027 complies with board policy and Florida statutes.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal years 2022 through 2023 through 2026 through 2027? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this public hearing? Any discussion, Board?
Yes.
What?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, uh, five-year plans are, are, are great, because you have to look, you have to look forward. Uh, I'm in favor of this, but I want to point out, uh, uh, to the, for the record, I want to point out, it is enormously, uh, difficult to look that far forward, uh, when it comes to building schools and some of the, some of the unfunded, uh, issues going forward. Um, so far this year, uh, well, uh, within the last, not calendar year, but, uh, within the last year, we've looked at building academic, we've looked at building, uh, office, uh, for the board or for the administration, uh, of the district. And it, it, it seems to me that we get to the end and we're really, um, it, it's kind of a knee-jerk reaction. Uh, we're, we're, we're right at the end, and then it's kind of crisis time, where we have to come up with the funds. Uh, I would like to see future boards, uh, address this, I'm, I'm just going to encourage, that it be addressed so that the funding can get figured out, and we don't have to do this, what was termed creative shifting, like, over in HVAC and then moving it to another thing and then moving it back. It's kind of like musical chairs. Uh, and so, so if we, you know, this is something that really needs work. Uh, the superintendent cannot do it, uh, by herself. It really takes board, board action and, and serious workshops, uh, to pull it together. Uh, while I'm not happy with the, the enormous unfunded, uh, items, uh, I would like to see those get funded, get targeted. We look at the actual funding, we try and figure that out, uh, especially when it comes to building and what we've been working with, with the county, and that's coming forward, where the funds come from. Uh, uh, Board Member Thora is heavily involved in that particular phase of it, but I believe unless we do that, we will get to the 11th hour and then try to make decisions, and it'll be, it, it, it'd be too little, too late, uh, I, I think. And we, you don't make the best decisions that way. So, with that said, if we can just pin it down better, uh, stay on top of where those funds are coming from, especially as we build, and get real, real targets, demographic targets. I know this year we talked about the, it being a flat line for students. It's wobbled within about four, three to four thousand students for the last 10 years, and it may go down. That's what national is indicating. Uh, however, we're different here in Florida, especially central Florida. So, I would just like to see that get handled. I, I am in favor of this with those reservations and with that coaching, uh, for future boards. Thank you, Chair.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-9.1 through C-24.1, with the exception of items D-25.1, D-25.2, D-25.3, D-25.4, D-25.5, D-25.6, and D-25.7 that have been placed under discussion, and items C-9.1, C-10.2, C-13.1, C-15.1, and C-24.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell? Seconded by Board Member Thora. All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant application Florida Diagnostic Learning Resources System Associate Center?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Any discussion?
Uh, this is the Scrivener?
No, this is...
This is D-25.1, Florida Diagnostic and Learning... This is D-25.1, Florida Diagnostic and Learning Resource Systems Associate Center. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Mr. Browning, I didn't hear your vote.
Yes, that's because I'm looking at it. I was looking, we jumped up to the 25s. I approve.
Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application IDA B-K through 12 entitlement 2022, 2023, and IDA B, IDA B preschool entitlement 2022, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King.
Second?
Second by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Cockney and Corp?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora.
Second?
Second by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve continuing to utilize the state of Florida alternate contract sources, source 55000000-20-NY-ACS for books and non-print library material and related ancillary services. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King.
Second?
Second by Board Member Thora. Any discussion? All in favor, signify?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Mr. Browning?
Yes. The, the, stand by, we're going through them awfully fast, Chair.
We're on D-25.4?
Yes, sir. I'm in favor of this. It works. One of the things that concerns me is I want to be sure, and perhaps we can get some reassurance, that books coming out of New York are books that we, that are being screened properly so that when they get to our district, they're to our standards. And that's a, perhaps the superintendent or more the lawyer can handle that, or just discussion. I just want to be sure that that takes place. It seems to be a, it's a, it's a critical national issue, it's a critical local issue on books and what comes into our district.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Ready for discussion? I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, I would like to have, if superintendent could make comment.
But your question has nothing to do with this, about the book review. You're talking about reviewing books. That has nothing to do with this.
Well, it does, it does, in that where they're coming from, it does.
We have a.
An abundance of caution. I'm interested in that, in discussion, if I may, if you'd indulge.
Sir, the district has a book review policy that we do follow, so I think, ask the superintendent, are we following policy? And a board member suggests that we're not following policy.
No, it isn't, it isn't that.
So, we are following policy, but this doesn't particularly have anything to do with reviewing of books. This is approval of a book contract.
Vendors.
Vendors.
Yes.
And those books are reviewed, any books that, they still get reviewed by.
And I would like to hear that, and I'm hearing that from you, and that's enough, it's on the record, that that will, in abundance of caution. And if, Superintendent, in other words, the issue is not an implication of impropriety, Chair, it is a, in abundance of caution, I would like reassurance as this goes through that, yes, we're on target, that things are rolling. And I'd like to hear from the superintendent.
Board Member Browning, absolutely. We follow all state requirements, expectations, but furthermore, we have a very thorough process, as the Chair has expressed, under the great leadership of Ms. Leeds and Ms. Talbert Irving, and we are very protective of our students and making sure that all of the materials provided to them are of the highest quality.
Thank you. That satisfies my interest, Chair. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve renewed discount catalog bids 38828H, 38838H, 38848H, 38858H, 38868H, 38878H, and 38888H. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora. Second by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, I do have discussion.
Hold on. She and Ms. Thora?
Thank you. Just for the community's awareness, what we're voting on is renewing bids and continuing to provide schools and departments with the opportunity to shop online and obtain accurate discounted quotes and freight charges from approved vendors. So, I'm all for it, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Yes, my, this is a million dollars' worth of action, if you will, and I really appreciate the fact that these are out and they're open for discussion. This is very encouraging. The, this is, as I say, a million dollars. Are we, these get approved, they're out of catalogs, would we know it? Would we know it? And again, maybe this goes to the superintendent, would we know it if we were losing traction? Because we're all real diligently trying to be stewards of these dollars, and dollars really matter. Superintendent, if you could comment on the, you know, the very general standards in place, because we run into a lot of this, and these discount catalogs tend to be beneficial. However, I would just like reassurance that we're in the community to know that even though they're in a discount catalog, if that catalog gets off the track a little bit, are we able to handle it as we go through the year, as we spend this money?
Chair, Board Member Browning, the answer is yes. Mr. Collins, who is with us here this morning, has extensive background and knowledge with regard to the purchasing process and is very diligent in following all of those in a very transparent way. And so, I know he's presented previously at work sessions and board meetings and does an outstanding job of that, but he is here this morning.
I don't think it's necessary for Mr. Collins to have to restate, whether he stated before many times. You just answered the question, Superintendent.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would like to hear if, like, if it got off the track, if it got off the track, you're, like, reassurance that we're, that this is not, that we don't actually just rely on these, that we really, if it gets off the track, we get on a different track.
So, these are, these discount catalog bids are for purchases that aren't already covered by one of our other bids or our stuff that's stocked in our central warehouse. So, this is for just random things that might come up throughout the year that a teacher may need or a department may need. But yes, we track these, they have thresholds that they have to follow when shopping from these catalogs. Our thresholds are kind of, in my opinion, more stringent than a lot of other districts are. They have to get certain amount of quotes at certain dollar levels, and then also, we monitor that as the requisitions come through our office to make sure all that's being followed correctly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. And Chair, that really does get the message out. It's an assumed message in general, but I love hearing that and the community gets to hear it, because often, where's all that money go? You know, that type of thing. And the diligent nature of nailing these things, million dollars here, million dollars there, pretty soon you're up to a billion bucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Are we ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the request to pay Cambridge Advanced International Certificate of Education program fees?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second?
Second by Board Member King. Any discussion?
Yes.
I have something to say. Yeah, this program is really good. It is the Cambridge ACE Program, and this gives our students rigorous programs that accelerates their education, and also, these students can earn college credits, and that is aligned with Florida statute. So, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Yes, and I really appreciate those comments. I, my thought process mirrors those comments exactly. This is a, this is a home run operation, especially if someone is aspiring to move on academically. This is incredibly important. Nine hundred thousand dollars is probably the greatest bargain of the century of seeing some of these students, and probably we all have. And this is incredibly important, that they can launch off and they gain that confidence. So, what, I just mirror what Ms. King said, her comments. I am absolutely in favor, and I appreciate the board chair putting this up on the discussion agenda. This is incredibly important, I think, getting the message across of the competency and the value we get on an education. This is dollars, but it's also education, and it's education cubed or square exponential power out of these dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Thora?
I have nothing further.
Thank you. All in favor, are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the request to pay international baccalaureate IB program fees?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora.
Second?
Second by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the correction of Scrivener's error in board policies 2266, 2371, 2430, 6320, 7530.01, and 7542?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second?
Second by Board Member Thora. Mr. Browning, you pull this for discussion?
Yes. I would just like to see a, hear a comment, reassurance from the attorney that, in fact, these are Scrivener error solutions that have zero policy impact going forward. They're, because of errors, we just want to be sure that we've got it so the future boards, if something comes up, while it was approved, it was noted at the time that it was a Scrivener's error.
Yes, sir, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Browning. Every one of the policies that are listed under the Scrivener's error fix are ones which have been made available to the public, the errors as well as the corrections in redlined format, so everyone can see what's being fixed. The requirement for a Scrivener's error is that it is not content-based, does not affect content meaning, and is not a meaning, and is not a substantive error. It is instead an error in which perhaps a word is duplicated or a phrase is duplicated, or there is improper punctuation, or a reference is made to a policy number that, in fact, instead of saying 2266, it says 2626, or something like that, which is clearly and obviously simply an error. All of these policies have already been voted on by the board after publication. Some minor errors came to our attention, and rather than holding a rulemaking and development special session and going back and having to hash out things that are, amount to, you know, a capital S here and there, or something like that, it simply, we collected them all together, published them so that the public could be aware of what those are, and the board would be aware of what those are, and recommend that they all be adopted, the changes be adopted in one fell swoop in order to, in order to improve efficiency, and also, just to make sure that things are correct.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Browning.
Yes, sir.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant application for prepping institutions, employers, and learners through incentives for nursing education pipeline fund, specific appropriation 120A, 2022, 2023?
Motion to approve the grant application?
Motion by Vice, motion by Board Member Thora.
Second?
Second by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, you pull for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, this is incredibly important to be out on the table so that the community, if you have an interest in nursing, nursing is like teaching, there's an incredible shortage, there's a need in the community. This grant application is, it's for three-quarters, a little over three-quarters of a million dollars. It's a big deal, it comes to us, it's endorsed by the Department of Education, and it's important to recognize the, those folks don't just sit up there in Tallahassee, they're on their game, and they have these grants, they have these programs, and they go around the state of Florida. And kudos to the Marion County School District for making the applications, having the grants, and the idea of them, I like them being out for discussion simply because it helps the community to know what's going on. They can see these items, it can pique their interest. While this one is only, or it's under a million dollars, it's well above what we've discussed on a pretty regular basis, this idea of a hundred thousand dollars being the, when we had that, when we had that poll of all the government folks, it's, it's, it isn't hard and fast, as has been pointed out quite often, but it is important, the standard of a hundred thousand dollars, and to have it be brought up for discussion, or better yet, not put down into a consent agenda when there isn't consent, that's something that I think is critical to the success of this board. So, this is endorsed, it's nursing, it's a grant that we've been sharp enough to get, to make the application. So, I'm very much in favor of this, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss it, and if anybody else did have any comments, feel free. Thank you, board. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post have the same sign. May I have a motion, pass unanimously. May I have a motion for the approval of the agreement with Packback and Corp?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second?
Second by Board Member Thora. Mr. Browning, you pull this one to discuss?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This merits discussion. It's a, again, it's, and the idea of, we want to be transparent, we want to be open. This is a hundred thousand dollars, so it hits, it hits that government, we won't call it a limit, the, sometimes that's questioned, it's a large sum of money, a hundred thousand dollars. Let's call it that. It's certainly my limit that it be discussed, and it's uncritical thinking. I, I can abide this, and I am in favor of it, but I believe we should consider this being implemented here in-house with our teachers. We've got, we've got, in our teaching staff and in our staff, we've got people that are well-instructed in critical thinking, and where sometimes we think we're adding to the burden of teachers or anyone that can handle this, this can be, there are experts, this can be in addition, this can be supplemental, this can be very. can be supplemental, this can be very, very helpful to the overall welfare of our experts. And we certainly have them, our teachers. So, I would like to see this brought in-house, if it can be, or some portion of it. A hundred thousand dollars is a big amount of money. If we, if we don't have to spend it, then if we do it in-house, and we have it, and we own it, we would perhaps be able to save on that, maybe half. And I just make that up, the idea if we were doing it in-house. And the idea we can supplement and reward our teachers, and I use teachers because that's our big base of intellectual capability on something like this, critical thinking. So, if, 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 this has to be brought out, it has to be, it's something that could be an opportunity, we've probably gone over the last year, we've probably gone over fifty or a hundred of these. And it's, it's an opportunity to increase incomes and not put an extra burden, but an extra opportunity on our own people, our own experts. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the 2022 through 2023 Unified School Improvement Grant, UNISIG, for East Marion Elementary, Lake Worth Middle, and McIntosh Area Schools? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Second by Board Member Thor. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this is a lot of money, and, but it's for a very important cause. And I want the, we really operate as, in a transparent fashion. And not every school, every year nails it. And this addresses what we call turnaround schools, because of the optimistic nature that we're, if you stumble, we see a turnaround. And we put a lot of focus, comes from Tallahassee, comes from our superintendent directing forces to turn these things around, and there are dollars advocated. It isn't just talk, there are dollars advocated. In this case, it's eight hundred and seventy thousand plus. And it's, it's supported by the Department of Education. I really want to accentuate that link to Tallahassee, because it's, it's critical. We have statewide power, and that's at the hands of the superintendent, and the superintendent is using that power with these schools. And there's a breakdown, if you, if you want to look at it, you can pull it up on Board Docs and look at the individual amounts. But it's critically important that these turn around for our well-being and our critical mission of education. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Florida Safe Schools Assessment to FSSAT Public and Charter School Recommendation?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This isn't a dollar item, as a matter of fact, it's, it's zero dollars. It's, it's something that's near and dear to my heart, though, and that is schools, safety, safe schools, and the safe nature of the entryway to our schools. And you all are familiar with the Stanton Weersdale situation that exists there, the unitary status, the six steps that unify and pull together what was back, we went from segregation to separate but equal, and then we unified, the courts unified, the fairness, the implementation without discrepancy. This school has severe discrepancy, and I, you know, I want to be sure that our, we even have a, you know, we have statutes on safety in schools, and we have an unsafe situation at the entrance to the Stanton Weersdale School and in those walk-in zones. And especially with a, it's kind of timely, when we have a hurricane coming in this direction. I looked at the distance from the school property to the homes where children work, a walk, and mothers walk, for example, pushing a baby carriage to pick up their child, you know, to walk their child home. And at this campus, we actually have pavement, and we have storm water drainage. And we don't have it at that school, especially in that tight little walk-in zone. So, I just like flooding, water retention, unsafe conditions, sewage backup, all sorts of problems that can be associated with fundamental safety is in question in my mind. I'd like to see that we address this at every opportunity we have, so that our schools are safe, even those schools that were built back under segregation and have not been improved, not inside the school, but outside in the six items, which number one is transportation, which is what takes it outside of the actual school.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes for one. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on October 6, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Achieved 2026, proposed revisions, and learning management system updates. A special administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for October 17th at 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Neola policy updates. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on October 20th, 2022. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Achieved 2026 goals, Achieved 2026 Goal One updates with, and the interlocal agreement. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do you have any comments, ma'am?
Board members, just to let you know that your reservations have been made for the winter conference. Everything is good. You will receive your packets on November 22nd with all the details and information.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
I have nothing further, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief today. I just want to take an opportunity, we've had a lot of challenges last week in our district, as you all know. I want to thank you all for your incredible support to our employees, our students and families, and our community. But I always say that where there are challenges, it sheds light on all the things that are working, and our people always come together. So, special thanks to many, many employees, including Mr. McGowan, and there are so many more to thank, in light of some of the tragedies we've, we've experienced. And we are working on our hurricane preparedness, and I just want to say to our entire district, our employees, and our families, students, please stay safe. We are here for you, but we want you to be home and be safe, and we look forward to seeing everyone back safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've pretty much handled the issues. We've got this storm coming, and I'm, I'm very concerned. The superintendent has been diligent in briefings, staff, meeting with emergency management. But I am concerned with the weather. I see this thing turning in in this direction, and it, it gives me pause. Typically, these slide along the side, and they kind of wear out, and they turn into a tropical storm. This one, and it, you know, God willing, and I'm hoping it's light, but everybody, pay attention, get yourself prepared, your families, if you've got a, the ability to have battery backup for phones and that type of thing implemented, think it through before you get into a difficult situation, because this could be a bad one. It appears we could be on the, the side of the storm that adds to, with the speed of the storm adds to the velocity of the wind, and that's the, the drag is the square of the velocity. So, when you hear something go from, say, ninety-five miles an hour, that might not affect your house, and it goes to a hundred, that five miles an hour, it's important to know is squared. So, it's twenty-five times the energy. So, just be aware, as you see these things, as you, as you hear it, as you monitor it, be on top of this one, because I'm, I'm a pilot, I like to look at the weather, I'm a sailor, and I, I've been in some storms, and this one could be very, very serious. And I would like to see, then segue into, I'd like to see Safe Schools take a look at Stanton. Let's take a look, we're behind, we're not going to be able to fix anything, but we may have a situation where we need to do some implementation there. And then, then finally, we've covered it very clearly, but the idea of minutes being handled either all in or all out, so that it, it's easy to address, and I'd like to see it added to a workshop, because, not, not a whole workshop for it, but add it to a workshop, the idea of the minutes being put in, because it's a, it's a big burden to try to capture what's being said at, in real time, when in fact, if we don't have it, then you know to go to the primary record, which is audio visual. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. I want to go in a little bit different order, Vice Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. My heart is heavy today, and I know that this is the point of our personal privilege for, to have board comments. We've just seen an email that's come across that our Emergency Operations Center goes into twenty-four hour operations, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. There will be briefings today at eleven fifteen and five fifteen. But I woke up this morning in an attitude of prayer, and that's all I feel I need to do during my board comments. So, if you will bear with me, feel free to join me, or just listen, but I need to pray. Dear God in heaven, you and you alone control the wind and the waves. You are faithful, and you are sovereign, and we are so grateful for all that you've done for us, and all that you continue to do. We thank you that you are peace in the midst of the storm. And just as you are able to control the wind and the waves, and have so many times before, you are able right now, just the mention of your name, we can speak it, and you can calm the storm, you can calm the waves. We know that you're able, we know that you can do exceedingly and abundantly above all we ask or think, and I know that right now, you can confound the wise, that you can just calm the storm, if that is your desire, God. And we ask that you operate in just a sovereign way. But Lord, even if we, even if you don't, even if you don't take the storm away, we will yet praise you and know that you are still on the throne, and that you are still worthy of our praise. And if the storm continues to come our way, and all the ways in Florida, frankly, Lord, all of our friends, all of our students around the state, Lord, all of the government officials making decisions, Lord, all of parents and families and church leaders, and just communities, God, we just speak peace in the midst of this storm. Lord, he who dwells in the shelter of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. We need your angels to give charge over us. We need your angels to build a hedge of protection around us, around our churches, around our schools, around our families, our homes, our communities, but Lord, most importantly, around the lives. Stuff can be replaced, buildings can be rebuilt, Lord, but protect the lives of those in the midst of this storm. Protect every person who is needing to make a decision, whatever that might be. Lord, may you guide us through this process, may you guide our decision, may you give us wisdom, may you give us direction, and Lord, we will be grateful for all that you are able to do. Just be peace that surpasses all understanding. May it guard our hearts and our minds in Christ Jesus, and we will be careful to give you the praise now, and we will be careful to praise you in the storm and after the storm, because you are sovereign and you are holy. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Member Thor?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. It certainly is a time to muster everything we have in faith and in community, and in the relationships that we have built with each other, and worked so hard to continue to build with the decision makers that are charged with keeping our community as safe as it can possibly be, and be there for each other. I'm very grateful for that. As you stated, we have another update at the Emergency Operations Center at eleven fifteen, and we'll continue to collaborate very closely with our community partners. And I too share your concern, and also your compassion and faith that together, we will overcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Thor. Member King?
Yes, thank you for the prayer, Vice Chair. Interesting enough, this morning, when I read my devotion, it was about anxiety and not being anxious, and so I think that was relief. And I do share everyone's concerns about our, the potential of a storm heading our way. Something positive out of this is I can say wholeheartedly that for years, at least three that I'm aware of, that the EOC, Preston Boland, the sheriff, Marion County School Board, our director, our executive director of operations and emergency management, Barb Dobbins, had been working diligently for years on this. They have a plan, they're prepared, if that storm should take a turn our way. I just encourage everybody just to be vigilant and pay attention, you know, to the radio, your social media, Marion Alert Now, there will be some clear guidance on what you should do. And if they say it's time to leave your home, then heed that warning, because they are the experts in this. And that's all I have to say, except for everyone just stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for your comments. I think Vice Chair Campbell said a lot in her prayer. And one thing the community can see about this board is that we are praying and believing, board, that we do believe in, in, in God, and we know that, I don't want to preach, but I am a preacher, so I guess I got to say this, because if I, I'll be disobedient. There is a account in the Bible of disciples out on the lake, and storm arose, and the wind and storm were very fierce. And in the midst of the storm, Jesus was at the bottom of the boat, sleeping. And the disciples said, went and woke him up, and said, "Master, carest thou not?" He woke up, and he calmed the storm, he calmed the sea, and he said, "Peace be still," and commanded the winds, the rains to stop. But the question was, "Master, carest thou not?" He does care. He does care. So, no matter what happens, didn't say that they, that he took them out of the storm, but they were still in the storm, and they made it out of the storm. So, I say that because we are going to make it through the storm, whether it hits us directly, or indirectly, or aroundabout, we are going to make it, and I'm confident of that. We have been preparing, and, and we're talking about an atmospheric storm, but the truth be told, we've been in a storm the past couple of weeks, this district, and our superintendent alluded to that, with transportation and some other things in our community that have been happening, and he's going to bring us through the storm. I'm prayerful of our, for our, our staff, and the families, and the communities that have been affected by certain events that have happened with the school district, and then to add on another week of atmospheric disturbance coming this way. I'm confident that we will make it through. I'm confident in the people that God has placed here to help navigate this. We were, many of us We were, many of us were in the EOC yesterday several times, and some of us are going to be there in a few minutes, back in the EOC, to make sure that we're making good decisions. Our superintendent and her team have been making great decisions, and I want to encourage you with my comments to, to get prepared, to all of our employees. If you have not started your preparations, please get prepared now, don't wait for the last minute to get prepared. Oftentimes, we say, oh, it's, it's going to be all right, and then things happen, and we're trying to scramble. Listen, do it now, do it while you have a chance, while it's still sunny, so get it, get it done. Things deteriorate fast, so please get ready. Our shelters are opening tomorrow, our special needs shelter will open today at Westport High School, so please, if you're in certain type of housing, if you, your housing is not stable, I want to encourage you to please seek shelter in houses. I know a couple of us have family members that are in the direct path of the storm, and we're trying to get them to come home, so I know they're listening, but don't be hard-headed, come home, come home, so, and, and be safe. And if you need sandbags, those stations are open, I will be remiss if I did not say that, so please be safe, and we're going to make it through the storm. All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to address that Board members have received the alternative placement list for students through August 29th, 2022. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a time of request to speak to on their child's behalf?
No, sir.
Wait a minute. So we don't have any today? Okay.
Just alternative placements.
This alternative place, I don't see it on the... That's not...
It's on page twenty-one, sir. It's just, it's just a stating.
It's, okay, so there's no vote on this? Okay, all right. So there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-two a.m.